Am I there? Hello?
Hi Eric.
How are you?
Good. Hi Ashante.
Hello.
Hi. New faces in our panel tonight. That's nice.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right. Oh, boy. Eric Karsh, what's he doing on the screen?
How are you, sir?
How you doing, Eric?
Been hanging in there. How you doing?
I can't complain.
Hey Eric.
How's everybody?
Ashante's on. Hi, Ashante.
Hello.
Hey, Ashante.
How you doing? All right?
Hanging in there.
Good.
Sorry, had to get rid of the dog.
Sounded like he was hungry.
No, she doesn't like the skylights. She barks. There's a, there's a dog that looks just like her in the skylight. It's very upsetting.
Is anyone else having problems with their network connection for Board Docs?
I did earlier, but it's straight away now.
I did get kicked out, but I was able to get right back in.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, about three minutes ago.
I'm also having internet issues, so I may turn my camera off, so, because you guys are freezing up on me.
There's been a little buffering for me as well. How we doing? Hi Elizabeth, you've been writing a lot. You're prolific.
Well, a little help from my friends, so.
Wow, it's a lot of, lot of stuff. Thank you. We're waiting for... What are we missing? Jess? Jess is here, not on the panel. Can you promote her?
I could.
Why don't I, you want me to start? Well, you, wait until you're ready. Michelle, you're just a, oh, there you are. You were just a shadow in front of your perfect background.
She listed as in the, does she go by?
Did you find her?
Not.
Jess, you have a different name on your screen?
Ah, there she is.
Okay, should I start?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, welcome, welcome to this public meeting of the Princeton Board of Education. The Board is an elected unpaid group of ten citizens who set policy and make decisions on educational, financial, and personnel matters for the Princeton Public Schools on behalf of all residents. We are always pleased when members of the community attend our meetings. The Board and the school district operate under applicable New Jersey laws and under regulations of the New Jersey State Board of Education. Each meeting includes an opportunity for those attending to comment on items on the published agenda or other matters of interest to them. The Board reserves the right to limit the time allotted to public participation. Law limits discussion of individual personnel and confidential matters. We desire that our meetings provide useful opportunities for communication between the Board and the community, so thank you for attending.
As required under the Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA 1046 at sequencha, adequate notice was given. We'll call on this meeting. It was authorized by the Board of Education and forwarded to the municipal clerk Princeton Packet and the Times on August 26, 2020, which was distributed to the schools and others on the standard distribution list. The Board reserves the right to enter its executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. Board Policy 20330 Recording Devices requires that we inform those attending this virtual Zoom meeting that the proceedings are being recorded. This meeting is not being livestreamed. The representative of the sending district is authorized to vote on such matters that affect sending district students or affect the governance of the Princeton Public Schools, as more specifically designated in NJSA 188308.1. In the event that this statute is amended, the law shall take precedence over this bylaw. Sending district votes pertaining to personnel actions for the high schools, central admin, and district-wide staff only, votes otherwise are considered extensions.
Thank you. Could you take a roll call, please?
Absolutely. Beth Baron.
Here.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Here.
Sam Dart.
Here.
Jess Deutsch.
Here.
Betsy Bagwell.
Here.
Brian McDonald.
Present.
Michelle Tuck Ponder.
Present.
Peter Katz.
Here.
Daphne Kendall.
Here.
Susan Cantor.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda tonight is item D1, Adoption of Minutes for August 25, 2020 meeting. Could I have a motion, please? Brian, second. Peter? Any discussion? If not, could we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Beth Baron.
Here.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Here.
Sam Dart.
It's yes or no?
Yes.
Jess Deutsch.
Oh, yes.
Betsy Bagwell.
Yes.
Brian McDonald.
Yes.
Michelle Tuck Ponder.
Yes.
Peter Katz.
Abstain, I was not there.
Daphne Kendall.
Yes.
Susan Cantor.
Yes.
Motion pass.
Thank you. And that just brings us to my report, and I'll just say that we are having another one of our almost nearly weekly meetings, so welcome to all the members of the public. It looks like we have about 120 people here joining us tonight. And I will just say, as I say every week, I want to thank all of our staff and our professionals and our teachers and, and the community. I want to thank our people in the district who are working so hard. Our professionals, I think, are, we all are being challenged, I think, to the, in ways that no one ever has before, to try to meet the needs of this emergency, and so we're grateful that everyone is working 24/7 in all areas of the district, across the district, our educators, and we are also hearing from our families, and we know that everyone is anxious and looking forward to seeing how this year will start, and we all want to get our kids back into school, and we're doing everything we can to get there. And so thank you all for your work and your, your hard work and your care for our children and, and for your patience and for your flexibility and, and everything. So it's, it's a tough time for all of us, but thank you all for, for being there together with us. We're all doing this together as, as a, as a family, as a, as a team for our kids. We have some good news tonight that we would like to start with, with regard to our labor relations. So Daphne Kendall, would you like to give us, give us an update?
Yes, it'd be my pleasure. Thanks, Beth. On the agenda for Board approval tonight is a one-year contract with our administrative support staff union, PRESSA. This contract provides for a 2.99% increase. Staff members who send their children to Princeton Public Schools will be paying an additional $500 of tuition annually. The Board was also able to cap tuition reimbursement expenses at $10,000. The members of PRESSA include our instructional aides, custodians, and secretarial staff. Their work is vital for our students. We appreciate the leadership of Eric Karsh and Ashante Thompson in working with us throughout the summer to achieve this contract renewal, and we thank them all for their hard work and dedication. A quick update on the teacher contract, the union is scheduled to hold a vote on the contract beginning at midnight tonight, and if approved by a majority of the membership, the Board will vote on the contract later this month. And I just want to take this opportunity to wish all of our staff a healthy and productive school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Daphna.
And I also wanted to thank my team, the negotiations committee. Michelle, Brian, Betsy, and Debbie, you know, we worked all summer and hours and hours and hours on these union contracts, but it's so important that we begin the school year with our employees knowing that we wanted to have them under contract. We, we did that, and it's because we wouldn't be anything without our staff. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Daphna. And I, I think that, Matt, we wanted to maybe just take a vote on that item right way, right away, even before Barry gets into his message. Is that okay with, is everyone agreed with that movement of the agenda? Okay, and if so, then could I have a motion for the improvement, approval of the item, which is F2, ratification of the agreement with the PRESSA contract? Could I have a motion, please? Brian, second. Michelle? And could we take a roll call, or is any discussion of that other than what we just said? If not, could we take a roll call, please? But you're on mute, I think. Miss... Thank you. Okay, you want to take a roll call? Did you say?
Well, yes. Beth Baron.
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Yes.
Sam Dart.
Yes.
Jess Deutsch.
Yes.
Betsy Bagwell.
Yes.
Brian McDonald.
Yes.
Michelle Tuck Ponder.
Yes.
Peter Katz.
Yes.
Daphne Kendall.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Pass is unanimous.
No, motion passed. Yes. And I think we have Ashante Thompson and Eric Karsh here with us on our panel. Would either of you like to say anything about these, this agreement?
You want to start, Ashante?
I'm sure. I just want to say thank you to the Board and their hard work and to our negotiation team too for working over the summer, doing it differently. It was very different without having everyone there. You know, it was lots of hours with us, but we're happy, and we feel like we did all that we could, and we appreciate all your help in making sure that our unit is ready to go this September. So thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
That's what I'd like to say. Thank you to the Board as well. Echo what Ashante said. It was a nice, smooth transition one year, and we have some things to look forward to in that next school year as we get closer to the next negotiations. And thank you to all, and Ashante said, we represent, you know, all the members of PRESSA, so we're very excited. So thank you.
Thank you both. Thank you for coming to be with us tonight, and we're grateful that we could get all this, this work done to be ready for the year. So thank you. Okay, that, I think, next item up after that exciting news is the superintendent's report.
Well, that was good news, and we're very, very pleased that, that PRESSA has a contract, and we look forward to having, having them help us get our schools ready for student instruction as soon as we possibly can. We also have some other good news tonight. I would like to announce that we have an anonymous funder who has graciously provided $249,000 worth of support, and let me explain what it's for. 175 families will be connected by Comcast over the next days, and this funder will pay for one year of unlimited connectivity so youngsters can participate in the remote learning. In addition to that, we recognize that they may not be able to touch every home in Princeton because of infrastructure or whatever, and the funder has also agreed to pay for 75 hotspots that we will be providing to youngsters, but these will be unlimited hotspots. So it'll be the same connectivity as if you had cable in your, in your home. So we're very, very pleased with that. In addition to that, we know childcare in this environment is, is really important, and when we engaged over 2,000 people about a week and a half ago regarding our school opening, parents were very concerned, and some of them rightfully so, because they, they couldn't afford childcare, and they need the childcare because they need to go to work. They're unable to work remotely from home. And to that, we were able to secure 60 scholarships for childcare at the YMCA and an additional 30 scholarships at the YWCA. So I want to say thank you to our anonymous funder on behalf of the kids of Princeton. You're going to make a significant difference in their lives, in their families' lives, and their ability to connect not only with schoolwork, but to connect and explore and do, and do the things that youngsters like to do with regard to internet access. So I thank the funder for that. Another bit of good news, Matt Bolden and our finance committee met this morning, and our surplus is a little larger than was projected. I think it's going to be close to $2.9 million. This is an un-audited number, so it could be 2.8 or 3, 3.1 when it turns, when it finally ends up. But the good news is, is that the surplus is here because this board has authorized over $1.2 million worth of COVID expenses, and we expect that number to rise to probably another 200 or so thousand dollars. And you may want, you know, we will detail on our website what we've been spending the COVID dollars on, but there are all improvements. There are either PPE or filtration systems or painting and restoration of our buildings and, and getting them into condition to open. So I, I wanted to mention that because I think that's good news, because it does tell us that we do have the dollars in the event that the future budgets have shortfalls, which they probably will, and that means the Princeton Board of Education has done a real good job with anticipating and having the ability to squirrel away a few dollars in the event that state aid does not come to fruition in future years. So I'll end there, but one of the other things, I sent the Board a copy tonight. I, I sent them a, a draft on Friday standards, and I had our professionals put it into a document. That document will be shared with all of our parents in the next day or so. It'll be up on our website. It's a 15-page document, and it outlines in details the expectations of what we expect in remote learning in all of our disciplines. So I want to thank our supervisory staff for putting together all the details. We do have a wonderful staff here, you know, under the direction of my assistant superintendent, Dr. Ginsburg. These people really work hard. This is about 34 pages of documents talking about how learning will look differently this fall than it did last spring. So I want to compliment them and, and say a job well done. I read the document. It is afternoon, and I got home, and it was, it was really well done. So kudos to them, and really, kudos to our public relations firm who has helped us tremendously with communications to the community. So I want to, I'm going to say a special thank you to them. And then I always say a special thank you to Elizabeth Collier, who works for me seven days a week. I even talked to her husband yesterday while she was on a Sunday or Monday drive, but I told her it was Labor Day, and you're supposed to work on Labor Day. I, I'm assuming that's the meaning of that. So I want to say thank you to Elizabeth. One of the other things I think is good news is we're going to be announcing some things tonight with regarding to athletics, but athletics is, is so important for so many kids, but what's more important? What's more important is getting our kids back to school for live instruction. That is essential. That is the goal of this board. That is the goal that I have. I need to get my pre-K K1. I need to get my special needs kids into these buildings, K to 12, as soon as possible. To that end, we are putting a full court press to get our buildings ready, to ascertain our staffing patterns, to try to bring in our kids earlier than the October 12th and 19th dates that I talked about two weeks ago when the Board approved the plan. We will do everything we can over the next three weeks, and hopefully we'll be able to announce an earlier, an earlier opportunity for kids to be in our buildings prior to those dates. My target date is October 1st, and so I wanted to announce that tonight as our target date. I don't want to promise you because there are a number of things that need to be done. We need a few HVAC pieces in some of our buildings. We need to get our buildings ready after they've changed the HVAC systems in three of our elementary schools, and our middle school, as I've communicated to you, had an unfortunate COVID incident, and therefore we've been delayed and not able to open that building until next Friday for the resumption of construction. But I still believe we can, we can meet the goal of October 1st, and we will do everything in our power because I know parents have been emailing me and asking me, and I want your youngsters to get into school. So we're going to do everything we possibly can to move that date from the 12th to the 1st for the kids that I just identified, and then we'll see about 2 to 5, and 6 through 12, maybe we could even move that date if, if we, if, if the construction work and the staffing patterns and our schedules work. But the first big event is next week, and that's remote learning on September 14th. I want to mention our one-to-one initiative. We're very fortunate to get our iPads on time, and for our pre-K K1 youngsters, two to five youngsters will be using Chromebooks that, that we have currently in supply until the Chromebooks, which are on backorder. They're backordered throughout the country, and there's a number of reasons for that. As you all know, that some of the parts come from China. There's been some trade wars and some trade embargoes and some slowdowns, so that's caused all school districts in the United States to have Chromebooks on backorder. Our laptops were getting ready for shipment to us, so we're hoping to have them, if not by the end of the week, at least by the following week. So that means for one week, we're going to have to make do with what we utilized last year, but after that, we should be in good shape with our laptops. So, good news is, we have finance. We, we have a wonderful grant to help some of our, our families. We, we set high standards for our faculty and staff, and the Board of Education has done a good job of managing its dollars so that in the future we won't be burdening the taxpayers, which I hope, I hope comes to fruition. So I'll end there, Beth, and, but I always want to thank my administrative staff and, and really the entire Princeton community for all the support, all the encouragement. You know, every email that I receive always says, "I hope this, I hope this finds you doing well." And then they may go on to ask me about different things, but it's always nice to have an email from a Princeton resident or a staff member, because the first thought is, "I hope this file, the email finds you doing well." I can't tell you how many you receive that say that. So that's a, that's a testament to the community that we serve.
Thank you, Barry. I think Debbie, Debbie, do you have a question?
Just a comment. I just want to say, Barry, thank you so much for listening to the public and to the board members saying how much, you know, we have all these computers and everything, but then the kids need to have the internet to be able to use them, and I really, really appreciate you, you know, going out and, and getting this grant, and I know Valerie, you know, wrote the grant, but I appreciate you seeing the importance of this and following kind of the whole way through. So our students can do their work at home during the remote time. So thank you.
Well, thank you, and, and again, thank you, Debbie, for reminding me. Valerie is a treasure, and she's got a gift for, for doing grants, very well organized. She was the, she was the key person in the reopening plan. So yes, Valerie is a treasure, and I, and I appreciate her efforts.
Thank you, Debbie, for, for that shout out. Thank you. I think that takes us then. Do you want to just go with the calendar next, Barry?
Yeah, just a, a, a small adjustment in the calendar. We're moving our PD up into the fall because it goes along with what we're talking about. We, we're not opening school to the 14th because what we wanted to do is to make sure that our teachers had an opportunity for the new learning management canvas. By the way, I'll be sending to the Board, they call it a cheat sheet. Maybe we should change that title. I like that so much, but for, for parents and students on how to connect their Chromebooks, and, and it's in English and Spanish. I'll be sending that to the Board, and we're going to have to come up with a little bit better name than that because that's not what we want to talk about. So, but the calendar is really a very minor change, just moving a PD day from later in the spring to November, and that will give us time to work with our staff to make sure if we need to make any remote learning adjustments or hybrid learning adjustments. And if I could just make one more comment, I know moms and dads are contemplating filling out the survey, and we've put a lot of phone calls out to you regarding letting us know whether you would want a remote option or a hybrid option. We still have a significant number of Princeton moms and dads and grandparents and guardians who have not responded. Please, if you're on the call, make a choice, and here's the guarantee. Guarantee is, we are family. This is not we and they. This is a family. If you need to change your choice, we'll do everything we can to accommodate you. This is a unique situation. These are unprecedented times. So make a choice the best you can, and if we need to adjust it, you have our commitment to work with you to change it.
And Barry, those surveys went out last week in case people are wondering where they are, because, you know, we all get so many emails and they sometimes get lost. So that was something, who did that come from and when?
Came from Dr. Ginsburg, and Dr. Ginsburg, I'm sure he's on the call. Bob, do you want to comment on that survey?
So if they want to find it and fill it out if they haven't done so.
Yeah, the, thank you. The survey is in Power School. They can access it through the parent portal, and we still have somewhere about almost 30% of parents who've not responded yet, and that makes it very difficult for us to plan. There are some schools who have only 12% not responding. We have some schools that are almost 40% not responding, so we really do need get, to get parents to respond so we can finalize a lot of the plans. Otherwise, our planning is only as good as the data we have, so we need that help.
And if they're having trouble getting into Power School, if they're new, if they can't get in, where would they go?
They could call 609-806-4203, which is our office, and our secretary, one of our secretaries will help them out. And as people are reg, new people are registering, the registrant, the registrars are directing them to that survey as well, so hopefully everybody will get, get an answer by the end of this week.
Okay, that's 609-806.
4203.
4203. I just think that parents are, it's hard for parents sometimes. There's a lot coming at them, and so this was, I know I'm a parent, and I realize I probably am, I may be late on the survey myself, because I know I filled out the previous one, but not maybe this one, and this is the important one, so.
The other, the other suggestion can be that they can call their, their child's school, and the secretaries there can help them out as well. That may actually be better for them, so everybody doesn't focus in on one secretary.
Okay.
Can I ask a question about the calendar? Barry, so I thought when we moved the professional development days to the beginning of the school year, pushing the start date of school back to September 14th, that we were not going to have any more professional development days.
We, they're, they're not full days, Daphna. They're a half-day professional days that are in the calendar. They're actually an advantage for the Board to have these half-days, and the way Bob has put them on a Monday afternoon, it allows us to work with staff till, till four o'clock or so for adjustments in remote learning or some new protocol or some new activity. So the PD days were always in the schedule for half-day. We weren't, we weren't going to have any more full day, Daphna. We were going to keep the half-days.
Okay.
We're going to need them.
So just so you know, it was intentional for the Board to have two full weeks of school, like, in the community, they call November, no school November. So we've worked to have those two full weeks, and so I just wanted, you know, is it too late to move it somewhere else?
Well, remember now, that day is not going to change for kids because they're still going home at 1. The PD is for the teachers, and that's going to be from 1 to 4.
Okay, what about the remote learners, though?
Well, the remote learners will be, the, the remote learners for that afternoon will not, not be engaged. They will be engaged during today.
Okay.
We, we actually only changed one day. We took the March 22nd day, I think it was, and we moved it up to November so that we could get the training in as we're learning what else we need to do to make everything work well.
Thank you, Dr. Ginsburg. Okay, so the calendar's a consent item, so I think we'll cover it when we do our consent vote later in the... Okay, so the calendar's a consent item, so I think we'll cover it when we do our consent vote later in the meeting. That, that brings us to fall athletics. Dr. Glazo.
Let's talk about fall athletics. After a long discussion with the board to determine whether or not we would want to have fall athletics, it was decided that the recommendation would be that we would approve athletics on a limited, phased-in basis. Let me explain how that will occur. On September 14th, we will allow varsity competition and athletics. So there will be tryouts. Each team will have an approved head coach and an assistant coach. Football will be the exception. It will have a head coach and three assistant coaches. There will also be coaches hired on a daily basis for the evaluation period. At the end of the evaluation period, varsity athletes will then practice and prepare to have games in the league that we are assigned. We have made arrangements for that to occur. Now, the, it'll be limited participation, so it'll be just be varsity athletes, so about 125, 130, that's what we estimate. There will be no other athletics until school reopens. When school reopens, the athletic director will make a recommendation to me. And then we will be able to hopefully open up junior varsity and freshman athletics along with all of our school clubs and all of our school activities. Clubs and activities may also be in-person if the advisor deems it to be appropriate and if the activity is pre-planned and if we follow all protocols. We're going to follow for sports NJ SIA protocols. Brian Zadinsky, our athletic director, has a set of, of coaching rules and regulations. And the board is making it very clear, they're giving me the authority by passing this resolution that in the event that a parent, coach, student athlete does not follow the protocol, that person will be removed, and if there are continued violations, the entire sports program will be shut down because we are not going to allow for any misbehavior that jeopardizes our ability to bring back our students, which is our top priority. So we're going to allow this because we think there's a lot of social and emotional support for athletes and for clubs and activities. And we want to do it in a phased-in opportunity, but we want to be sure that everybody is clear and understands that if it's reported to me that there are violations of protocols, we're not social distancing, we're not wearing face masks, we're not using hand sanitizer, we're not following NJ SIA rules, then it will take me about 10 seconds to shut it down. So I want to be clear tonight that the board is doing this. But the board is, is committed to reopening these schools for all of our kids. That is our priority. We have 3,900 kids that are our priority. So we don't want to do anything that's going to affect or negatively affect a potential October 1st opening for our kids. So we need your cooperation. We need your attention to detail. And we need you to be safe so that you can enjoy what you like without jeopardizing the opportunity for others to participate in, in, in the educational process. I think that's pretty much it. I have the athletic director. Brian, do you want to, I know you're on a panelist. I asked Matt to make you a panelist tonight. You want to add anything to what I've said, or do you want to make a comment at this time?
I, I would just like to say that our, I spoke with our coaches, coaches earlier today, our head coaches, they're excited at, you know, enforcing the policies, and they're anxious to meet with me. And they wanted the parents to know that they're going to carry as many players on their rosters and they, as they possibly can to keep things safe. So they may, you know, expand their varsity rosters so that we can be as inclusive as possible and include as many players as we can this season. So that's what I just wanted to mention that, you know, you have the full support of our head coaching staff, and we will keep as many kids as possibly involved in a, in a varsity program.
Thank you, Brian.
And Barry, just to, for a process, so the public understands and the board's clear what we're going to do. We'll talk about this now, I think, and then you're going to talk about the restart and reopening, and we'll talk about that, the update. And then, and then we'll have a public comment. And then we're going to vote on both of those things, just so that we can, again, as we've been doing now as a practice, making sure we hear from the public before we vote. But first, we're going to talk about each of these things, so.
Sure.
Yep. So Betsy?
Hi, thank you very much. Dr. Glazo, thanks for laying that out. So it sounds like this phased-in plan that you've described for the high school involves athletics, but also other extracurriculars. And as you said, that will start once school is able to open. So I'm wondering if you can describe what the middle school activities may be like. I think there are a lot of parents out there wondering about that. And my other question for Brian Dubinsky, just from a process perspective, if this is approved, should all students interested in a sport try out for varsity, even if they may not expect to be on that team? Or would JV then have another kind of tryout? So those are my two questions, middle school and logistics.
Brian, why don't you take the, go ahead.
Sure. Every, every child that registered for a sport at Princeton High School should try out for a varsity team. They, the coaches will have additional coaches on staff that'll be competing on a, on a day basis to help supervise the assessment period. So yes, every child freshman should start to go through the process and gain that experience. To give you an idea, right now, at last check, we had approximately 272 students registered to participate in a fall sport at Princeton High School. At this time last year, we had, we had medically cleared 466 students. So our numbers are down. You know, and understandably so. As far as middle school athletics go, currently in the Colonial Valley Conference, I don't believe there may be one or two schools that are hopeful, hoping to launch an intermural middle school program. You know, currently at this moment in time, due to the 3:00 PM dismissal at the middle school, you know, our teachers are going to be in remote learning during that period. And they are going to be in their homes, teaching their kids with symmetrical and asymmetrical learning. And for them to come back to Princeton, you know, at that middle school level, I'm not tight, I'm not certain that we would have the staffing at this moment in time to even run an intermural program at the middle school. So with this phased-in approach, you know, I think it's the safest approach that we could, we could have to ensure the October 1st start to in-person learning.
Betsy, I don't know if that, is there a follow-up to that, or?
Not for now. Thank you.
Yeah, for now, I see your hand.
So I'm just concerned because, Dr. Glazo, you said that we were going to run a very limited program, and the athletic director came on and said that the coaches are going to expand their rosters to include as many people as possible. So before you said there was going to be 125 kids involved. So how many kids realistically, Brian, are, are the coaches looking to have play varsity sports this fall?
Well, for example, if, you know, we, we, we're limited to carrying 20 people on a bus, only 20 can sit up for a game. So for example, if, if on a soccer team, if we had, I believe, for example, in boys soccer, we have approximately 77 medically cleared to try out for the sport. 18 can be rostered and board a bus to play for a game. So, you know, theoretically speaking, to expand that roster with two coaches and a volunteer coach, we can probably safely have with pods, probably 30 to 40 students in the boys soccer program as a varsity pool of players. Historically, we would have, we would have up to 280 players.
So the players are going to be transported on buses?
Well, when they, when they, when they play athletic competition away.
Oh, I thought their parents would be driving them.
That is, that is strongly recommended in the proposal.
Right, but we would transport those who could not be transported.
Right, but on our, for our school plan, we're only allowing 11 students. Is that correct on a passenger bus?
No, we will have somewhere around 20 to 22 students on a 54-passenger bus.
Okay, and I guess I want to know, has any consideration been given to running certain sports like cross-country and other sports that have a low incidence of contact?
Well, we, we're running those programs.
No, but only those, as, as opposed to?
Yeah, so now let me answer your first question. We have 272 kids registered. You're only going to get about 50% or a little bit more who are going to be varsity athletes. So you're really only, as I said, we're going to probably have somewhere between 125 and 150 kids participating. We're not going to expand rosters to carry 70 kids on a football team. That's not what I want. I want them to have a varsity team with a limited youngsters to replace sick or injured youngsters as we typically do on, on teams. But we're not going to expand it to be carrying 50 and 60 players on a varsity team. So we only have 272 athletes who are going to try out. I would assume we'd have about 140 to 150 max who would be varsity athletes for this coming school year in the fall.
Okay, and then one final question. I'll let my colleagues chime in. But there are traditions, like for example, at Princeton High School, the senior sunrise, which all 350 or more students would get to get together, and then they end the year with a sunset, I think. So will that be occurring?
That won't be occurring. The principal asked me about that, and I said, I don't think that the sunrise would be a good activity for 350 kids to bring them together prior to us getting schools open. Remember, that's the priority. So she had asked me about that, and I said, you know, could, can you, can you guarantee me you're going to have these kids socially distanced, and after that, where are they going? It just didn't, it just didn't make good sense to me to have 350 kids do a sunrise.
Okay.
Susan?
I'm just wondering, Brian, could you talk about what kind of responsibilities the parents, the students will have when they commit to being on a team in order to maintain both for the community and for our school community, safety for all, for all the town?
As part of our health and safety plan, I will be having a Zoom session with all registered athletes and coaches and their parents as part of the plan. I will go over the health and safety plan, and it defines expectations for athletes, expectations for coaches, and it outlines the health screening process. So to give you an idea, before students, within two hours before a student will attend a practice or a game, they will complete an online form that requires them to answer a COVID-19 health screening questionnaire. There are going to be designated locations where students will get their temperature checked by our athletic event staff and medical staff. The students have guidelines that are set forth to maintain social distancing. Everyone who is attending has to take the health screening. That includes coaches, and includes even bus drivers and support staff like our athletic trainer. Our athletic trainer will be set up outside under a tent. The building will not be available. We have additional portable restrooms that will be sanitized in compliance with CDC and ET environmental protection guidelines. So there will be an orientation to get everyone up to speed with this. We also have a website that will have all the information. I anticipate meeting with coaches tomorrow afternoon at 3:15. I'm going to go over my most recent proposal with the coaches, and we're going to update the, the website so the parents will, will know exactly where to go. I can push out the health team, health screening questionnaire via text message to all the parents and the students. Just they'll have it on their smartphone devices whenever they need it. It will also be available on the website. And even for home games, we plan on having all the spectators that will come will be in compliance with the limitations set forth by the CDC of no gatherings outdoors of more than 500 people. And we will have a additional athletic event staff making certain that spectators are wearing facial masks and that social distancing guidelines are being practiced. We purchased additional signage that you'll see going up around the bleachers. In addition to that, we've added additional entrances so that spectators, parents, and students can be dropped off on Walnut Lane. There's a 10-foot sliding gate that'll be there so that they can, people can easily move in and out, and students can spread out on Walnut for pickups, and they don't have to turn into the performing arts center parking lot. We, we also added a 10-foot sliding gate at the 50-yard line on the field closest to Walnut, so students don't have to go through the tight spaces and congregating groups when they're trying to get onto our turf field. So, you know, we put a lot of thought into this. I've been working with our coaches since we had the Athletic Reentry Committee. And, you know, we're ready to, to implement everything.
I, I guess the obvious question is, you know, no locker room availability and no indoor practices?
Yes, that's, there's, there are no indoor practices. The buildings will be off limits. You know, students will have to, to bring a jug of water. And our, our athletic trainer is the only person who's available to supervise the refilling of that container, and then she has to sanitize, you know, the fill-up location. But there are no shared water, water replenishing locations during practices or games. And, you know, everything will be outdoors, even cheerleading will take place outside in designated locations.
I assume we'll have adequate water so that those who forget or so that that will hydrate it.
Yes, we'll be, we'll be, a meeting with our trainer tomorrow morning, and we'll be, we have face masks to give out, give out to the athletes. We also have sanitizing pump sprays for any shared equipment that needs to be sanitized after use. And we also have hand sanitizer jugs and individual bottles that we'll be handing out to students who are unable to bring it or forget.
Ms. Tuckponder?
Hey, Brian. Question, um, let's talk about football. Almost every major college in the United States has canceled their football season because of the enormous difficulty, because of the nature of the sport, to protect the players from exchanging air that potentially subjects them to infection. My question for you is, how are you going to ensure that 15, 15, 16-year-old boys are going to be able to not or to be able to safely play that sport? And I will, as a former cheerleader, I will also include cheerleading because cheerleading is about yelling. So how do you intend to ensure that cheerleaders are also adequately protected in engaging in their sport?
Well, I, I spoke with our, our cheerleading coach, and she understands that there's absolutely no stunting and that we talked about a minimum of 10 feet distancing for when the, the girls are cheering on the sidelines to ensure that there's, you know, less reduction in the possible transmission of COVID-19. As for the football players, there was a recent video that I shared with Dr. Glazo that indicated due to the, the high school age of our players, it's, it's different than, than older collegiate players, that the, the risk of transmission in the video by the NJ SIA doctor indicated that the risk is lower for high school-aged children and students and teens than it is for collegiate athletes. So there's different risk factors, I believe, as NJ SIA put out for, for football teams. So at this current moment in time, I believe there's nine, I believe roughly nine or less schools that aren't having a varsity season.
In the state or in the county?
In, in the state, in the state. So right, right now, we are, we would be the only school in the CDC not having a varsity season at this moment in time. As we were, as we were on our discussion, I was getting reports coming from other, other districts. So we were, you know, we were on the linchpin right now, I believe, and just waiting to see. Ewing, Ewing may be, Ewing is going to be on the board agenda a little bit later than ours, but that's, we're the two last schools. So I'm, I'm confident that we're doing the right things for our kids and getting them the, the option, you know, to participate in fall sports outdoors in a safe way. And like Dr. Glazo said, if our students aren't going to be in compliance, and they're not going to be wearing facial masks upon arrival, and they're not going to, you know, thirdly, congregating. and they're not going to be wearing facial masks upon arrival and they're not going to, you know, thirdly congregating after, after their practices or after their games, then we are going to shut it down.
Right.
Anyone else, any other, Jess?
I wonder, Dr. Galasso, could you just share with us a little bit more about the rationale for for going forward with sports and what you think the benefits are to giving our high school students at first the opportunity for the structured supervised activity and then the phase-in approach?
But I think the phase-in approach is to make sure that we do not have a spread or COVID incidence which would negatively affect our ability to bring back our special needs youngsters K to 12 contained or pre-K, K and 1. I think the benefits of activities in general, not just sports, are tremendous for youngsters. I mean, I think back to my own high school days. I went to high school. I loved, I mean, I was a good student, but I really was going there because I wanted to participate in, 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 in sports and activities. I couldn't wait to do that. That was one of the motivating factors. And there are a lot of kids who come to school every day because they want robotics or they want debate club or international diplomacy. These are, these are things that, that, you know, the reason we have electives in schools is because we don't know what switch is going to turn on a youngster and what, what class is going to change that youngster's course of direction and what they want to do as, you know, in life. So the value, I think, is, is hard to put a value on it. But we do know that athletes, kids that are involved in, in school. I always used to say to our high school parents when I was in service that the youngsters who go home at 2:11, that was when the school day ended at that time, the 2:11 kids are the most vulnerable. You don't want your kids home at 2:11. You want them home at 4:30. You want them doing something, whether they're the thespians, whether they're in the orchestra, whether they're in a club, whether they're in robotics, whatever they're in, that's what you want. Because that, that I think has a tremendous amount of benefits for adolescents in general.
Debbie?
So I would only be supporting sports if I knew we were just training and practicing. The idea of games with other communities that, you know, I have no idea what, you know, where their parents have been, where their kids have been, just makes me very, very nervous. I mean, if one of our coaches gets sick, that's a staff member that we've just lost, another teacher who won't be in the room. And I just feel very uncomfortable with that. So I can't approve this because I, I understand the whole sports. I do. I really understand the kids getting together, but I was hoping they could just train together, play intermurally together, learn skills together, you know, and keep up, you know, their sport and keep up what they do. But this playing games, I mean, when I read how many other people for football we need to have, you're having like two people for the tickets, you're having the announcer, I mean, it's just getting bigger and bigger and bigger. And it's, to me, too many, too many people. Plus, you're going to have your cheerleaders and, you know, it makes me nervous with these other towns coming in and are you going to, yeah, I mean, we've seen this. You know, people show up at Target and they don't want to put a mask on and you have some person saying, well, you have to. So are we going to really be like that or who's going to be like that? And telling these other families when they show up, you cannot come into our area until you wear a mask. I just, I feel there's too much more for us to focus on when again, you know, our focus is to open the schools and get our kids in. But for me, the game plan is where I'm stuck. And the transportation part kind of got me a little off. I, I know we're working very hard to ask parents to drop off their own kids so we can have fewer kids on a bus. And we're trying to do all these things. And so this other one for sports with the travel, you know, it just makes me nervous. And I just want to share the reason that I won't approve this because I just want the kids to be out there running around, but I don't want them to be interacting with other schools.
Susan?
Brian, did you mention that will there be a waiver that you can, normally you might have to take the bus to and from? Will the athlete allowed by their parents if they're available or themselves eligible?
There'll be, there'll be a parent waiver form that parents will complete after teams have been selected so that they can drive their, their children to and from games. So that wouldn't be a problem. So we'd only be transporting students that didn't have a ride on the bus to and from games. And, you know, at this moment in time, we have nine cheerleaders that are registered for our cheerleading team. And we do have the right for, for home games to, to restrict access and limit access. We can provide tickets to reduce the number of, of attendance for our home games. Historically, we are coming close to 500 attendance or 100 attendance at our, at our home football games. And we can also restrict, place restrictions on opposing schools we're playing. Right now, there are CDC restrictions that is limiting bans, you know, attending home football games. And because we are the home team, we actually do have a lot of control over, you know, the guidelines that we have in hosting an event for our football team. So if that puts anyone's mind to these, you know?
Yeah, I think guys develop those guidelines, you know, sharing them, but a lot of us at least.
Anyone? Brian?
I guess I have a process question. I know that there's a lot of energy in the community on the subject. And I'm wondering if we're going to handle this the way we have handled some other topics of great interest to the community, which is to allow them to speak, then allow board members to make any final comments and then vote. Or whether this is happening in some other way.
I think that's what we have done in the last couple of weeks on these big votes. So I think that's appropriate. I think we're going to, we can speak and then we can hear, hear from the town and hear from the people and then we'll vote after public comment. Dr. Galasso, I just, I wondered, you know, when we've talked about this, you, our priority really is getting those kids, getting those little youngest learners, the most vulnerable learners in the building. And I appreciate the lengths you've gone to try to find an option to kind of make, make this work for everybody, for the families who are also asking us for normalcy. They want us to try to get their kids back and all sorts of activities. But yet, you know, I think as a board, we're committed to making sure we get those, those, those little ones and the, and the specialized kids in. And that you seem to have offered us a way where you think you can do that. Could you just comment briefly? I know you've said to us that you're following, I guess it's the governor's guidelines, NJASA. Plus, we got specific guidelines, I think, that were circulated to the board from the, on the sports that were actually quite interesting because they said how the sports were to be done, those guidelines. I wonder if we'll make those public? And then I know you've consulted with the health officials in Princeton and you've talked with our school physician. And I know you've been speaking to your colleagues in other districts. So could you give us a little bit of that context?
Yeah, you know, we've talked to Jeff Grosser and Dr. George and also Dr. Helmrich, our school doctor. Dr. Helmrich and I spent about an hour, hour and a half in my office a week ago. And, you know, he had indicated to me that, you know, if I, if I, if this were the recommendation of the board to go forward, that he could support that because of the transmission rates in Princeton and because of the due diligence that the entire state of New Jersey has been, has been working on for the last three months, all the residents, whether they're school people or not. And, you know, the hospital cases, when we reviewed it last week, there were very, very few hospital cases. And also I sent the plan to Jeff in anticipation of him reviewing it. He said it was very, very similar to other school districts that he's seen, that he's reviewed and saw. And Dr. George, you know, I, I think if, from the standpoint of transmission, they all believe that we're at the lowest transmission points. And the question becomes, if you're not going to open up your schools and if you're not going to open up your normalcy in, in activities for kids now, what are you going to do when flu season comes in October, November and December? So based on that, it was an option that I wanted to offer to the Board of Education in the sense of saying, the, you know, this is, this is the time where we want to make sure that if our transmission rates are low, if we can get our buildings ready, if our staff is ready to come back to work, if our buildings and we've done our due diligence in making our staff feel as safe as they possibly can, if we give, if we take care of the staff who really need to be home because of, because of their individual issues that they have, we can do this. And we can do this because everybody is going to, going to have to continue due diligence that they have shown over the last three months. You know, we didn't like what the governor was doing, but the reality is it seems to be working. And so now maybe we can get our kids back to school. But I want to reiterate, primary focus for me are the kids that I've mentioned a half a dozen times tonight. And if I find that this program or any other program inhibits that, then I would have no option but to recommend that we close it down immediately.
Okay, thank you. Did we have any other comments on this before? We are going to talk about the revised restart plan and then have some public comment and then we'll come back.
We're going to have another opportunity for a comment?
Yep, I think so after public comment. Does that make sense to everyone? Okay, good. Dr. Galasso, do you want to speak to us about the revised PBS restart and reopening?
Yeah.
Minor things?
I'm sorry?
I know you had minor things on that update.
Yeah, we do have, the last board meeting, I think it was last week, right? No, we, before that, we missed last Tuesday night. I don't know why we missed last Tuesday night, but we did. Anyhow, we, we approved the YWCA to operate three of our preschool classes. And so we put that into the reopening plan. In addition to that, the county superintendent is requiring some specific language with regard to IEPs. And we added those elements that they wanted. We did receive communication from the county office that our plan met all the elements. They do not approve the plan. They just indicate that it meets all the elements or they would send something back and say, hey, you're missing a this or that. We did not receive that. We're just adding these elements because they were changes since the last plan that, that the county superintendent has on file. And I want to make sure that she always has the up-to-date plan because of liability issues and because I want it to be accurate in the event that they need to look at that document for health and safety and, and all the protocols that we put in place. So it's very minor, but basically it's just an update. And we'll probably have one on the 29th again, when, I hope we have one on the 29th because that'll be a good news revision because that means we're going to open up our schools on October 1st. So that, that will be what I hope happens on the 29th at our, you know, at that board meeting.
Thank you. Are there any comments on that? If we want to say anything about that, okay. If, if none, I think that takes us to our public forum G1 for public comment on agenda and non-agenda items. We ask that you keep your comments brief, be mindful, there's probably a number of people who want to speak. We keep it to three minutes and we will enforce that. And it's not a Q and A session for the board, although Dr. Galasso may want to respond if there's anything there that he feels he should comment on. So, Matt, you want to start that, start us off?
Beverly Shumway? Beverly?
Beverly, you're on mute. Can you unmute her, Matt?
I'm asking her to unmute. That's, skip over her for now. Lori Weir? Oh, you got?
Yes?
Hi, yes.
Hey, I, first of all, I would like to say to Mr. Galasso, thank you so much for your very transparent plan for the little kids and for the special needs kids. Anyone who knows me knows that I have a special needs son and he has not received any kind of education. Virtual has not been in any way effective for him and it has been unbelievably difficult for my entire family. So I really do appreciate, it's the first time that I really felt like I was heard and that my child was understood. So thank you for your comments. Also, Mr. Brian Bensky, have you ever thought about taking over the special ed department? Because I just love your very practical, get out there and do stuff attitude and whether or not it all comes to fruition. I really appreciate your enthusiasm. And I wish that the special ed section of Princeton Public Schools had that kind of motivation and that kind of practical, think about the kids, think about each activity, think about their motivation, what they need, what makes them happy, what makes them tick. You know, as Mr. Galasso was saying, you know, we have to find what works for each child and give all these opportunities. Well, I really feel that my child and a few of the kids in the autism program have been very discriminated against because we have been screaming, crying, yelling for quite a long time about how what is going on has not been working for our children. And we have not heard, I have not heard until tonight, anything that recognized what really their reality has been with this long-distance learning. So I just want to make you all aware of what some of us have been experiencing. And I also want to say that there was a letter that came out about the YMCA, that the YMCA is giving after-school care for people who need to work. Well, those of us, the special needs kids, also need to work. But we are not giving any kind of accommodations in the YMCA. We have asked specifically for aides for health. And another thing, congratulations to the aides. The aides are our lifeline in special ed. And the more power you give them, the better off we all are. So I'm, congratulations for making a good decision about giving the aides more support because they really deserve it. So some very good things have come out of this meeting for me. But do not underestimate how devastating this has been for some of our families. Some of our kids who are on the spectrum and are nonverbal have suffered and their siblings and their parents have suffered more than you can begin to imagine. Do not forget about us. Do not discriminate against us. We need your help. If you cannot really help our children, please send us to another place out of district where we can be helped because the last six months have not been working for us. Okay, thank you very much for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bev.
Lori Weir?
Hi, good evening. Once again, I want to thank you all for your tireless efforts in this incredibly difficult and complicated time for kids and parents and teachers and all of you. And just please know that you are, how much you are all so appreciated. I just want to add a little bit of perspective. We all seek to stay healthy, to avoid suffering and to be happy. And this pandemic is challenging to everyone. Beverly's comments just really underscored that point. And I read today that one in four people is considered suicide and that's an incredibly alarming and sad statistic. And when life gets really difficult, it's grounding to know there are things we can control and there are things we cannot control. And I tell myself this a lot lately. And allowing many, perhaps 200 or 300 kids whose parents registered them, as Brian said, to play outdoor fall sports for their physical and emotional and mental and social well-being is one safe step that we can take. It is in our control or it's in your control. Like was said, our governor, our Department of Health, our governing body of sports have determined outdoor sports can be safely played. And on a club level, that's been happening since early July for the kids that were able to participate. And last I checked, 14 local schools, I think it's higher now, have decided to follow that guidance and play. And I think that's wonderful news and there's no logical reason our PHS kids cannot play also. So I'm really happy to hear by Galasso's recommendation. As it says on our district website, our fields are an extension of our classroom. And I'd say we are lucky they are outside and they're available and that we have all these great coaches that are ready to coach our kids. But I just also want to add and emphasize that the opportunity to accrue But I just also want to add and emphasize that the opportunity to accrue the benefits of school sports should not be limited to only the very best players and that the opportunity should be available for all students who choose to play so long as the coaches can manage it. And maybe the JV teams wind up with practices or scrimmages or just as practice players on a bigger squad, I don't know. Maybe they only play at home, I don't know. Maybe the coaches just have to work that out as NB state, you know, in line with the safety guidelines. I'm sure they'd be happy to do it because they know that they care about their athletes and their programs. So please, I ask, just don't try to keep it simple and say just varsity because such a decision would be detrimental to at least half the kids who want to play. And it's most especially the freshmen who are looking forward to fall sports as one way to actually meet friends and acclimate to this high school. And they too need a robust experience. And parents, I'd say, as a parent of a senior and a freshman, parents are only as happy as their least happy child. And it would also undermine the future of the sports programs that we are so proud of if we don't have them. And just last but not least, just know that people who are kids that are not playing outdoors are more likely getting together indoors. And I think that we all would agree that that is a less desirable outcome from a COVID standpoint. Or put differently, avoiding spoilers does not decrease the COVID risk or decrease the chance or increase the chance that schools will open. It's like outdoors good, indoors bad. I think as many clubs as possible that can be outside to get kids stimulated and happy outdoors is what we need to focus on and sports is one piece of it. So please keep that in mind and just thank you again for all your hard work. I really, really appreciate it.
Thank you. John Durbin?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, everybody. I'm very humbled by everybody that's spoken tonight because everybody's thoughts have been so considerate and concerning about everybody involved. And I do honestly believe at a personal level that our best way through all this is to stick together and to help each other and put community first. So thank you to everybody for everything you're doing, working to get the schools open. And thank you to Brian Dubinsky and to Dr. Glosso for coming up what I think is actually a pretty well-considered and thoughtful plan. So previous speakers have already covered some of the ground that I was going to cover. So I'm going to jump to a local example that I think might help, you know, in terms of some of the concerns that Debbie raised. In particular, for many of you that know the structure of Princeton Little League, you know that all the games are played in town and all the teams are within the league and all the kids are from within town. So there's no crosstown mixing. I'm currently the president of West Windsor-Plainsboro-Bay Bruth, which is the next level up in youth baseball in town, which covers teenagers from age 13 to 15, 7th grade through 10th grade. That league has a different structure though, in the sense that it's kids from Princeton, West Windsor, Plainsboro and Cranberry. And this past summer, we were one of the last leagues standing that hadn't officially canceled a regular season here locally. And in a lot of ways, we kind of kept just telling the parents that we're on pause, we're holding, we're holding. I don't think anybody on the Bay Bruth board thought we were going to be able to play. But in the end, with the lowering of the infection rates and the hospitalization rates and then Governor Murphy giving us the green light, we decided to go for it. And we went for it primarily because of just the flood of ongoing emails that we had gotten about how, about, you know, parents just concerned about all the difficulties that their sons were having, you know, with not being able to get out and do sports and just endlessly playing video games and doing nothing else. So we went ahead, we launched the season. We had 65 kids in the end sign up and play. We had four teams, two from Princeton, one from West Windsor and one from combined Cranberry-Plainsboro. And I think there are several points to be made. One is that we were able to make it through the season successfully without any diagnoses of COVID. We had very high safety protocols in place that had to be approved by the Princeton Rec Board, the West Windsor Rec Board, Plainsboro and Cranberry and their health departments too. And those protocols, you know, I can't say to all of you that all the parents and all the players and all the coaches followed them to the letter every moment of the time. But they actually did a really good job and I have no doubt that having those higher safety, sorry, protocols really helped a lot. And as I told some of you, there were only a few instances where I had to look over and go walk up to a few parents on the sidelines to remind them that they were violating our social distancing rules. They immediately either pulled their face mask back up or pulled it out of their pocket and put it on. And I think there was a real sense, and I think this is one instructive lesson that comes out of this, is I think there was a real sense among all the players, coaches, umpires and parents that we were all in it together and that if any one of us screwed it up, we were going to screw it up for everybody. And I have a feeling that you guys are going to find that's going to be the case too if you vote to move ahead with this. I also want to say that I spent an incredible amount of time looking at the sports, safety, health and guidelines at all levels around the country.
Hey, John, it's Michelle and I have the lousy job of being the timekeeper. So if you could unwrap it up so we could let as many people talk as possible, we really appreciate that.
Yep, I'm just about there, sorry. And I will just say that I think the safety protocol plan that Brian and Dr. Glosso put together is as good as you're going to get except for at the major league level or the professional level. So I think that's great. I think we can do this safely across the towns. And I hope that you guys will find your way to vote for this plan. I think it's actually a good plan and I would give it two thumbs up from where I'm sitting. Thank you.
Thanks.
Jen Vidjou?
Hello, thank you. So I want to talk tonight about the clear initiative that's being put forth by the board because it affected all three contracts that have either been signed or will be signed hopefully. And that has to do with bringing our children into the district as an employee. And, you know, my second one is a senior, so it doesn't really affect me anymore. But I just wanted to get across that because of economies of scale, it really doesn't cost a tremendous amount for our children to be educated. And we do pay a tuition. But not only that, you have employees who are able to take a period to run and go see their kid in a little show rather than having to take the day off. You have parents who don't have to worry about the fact that, for instance, my home district, they started a week earlier, they got out a week earlier, their spring breaks never matched up. It would have been a nightmare to have to constantly scramble for that kind of care. I got to know the curriculum and the instructional aspects of Little Brook of the middle school. I got to know parents as friends and my children's friends as people besides just students. And so I think there's so much that the district actually gains by having educators in the district who are also parents in the district. And so I just wanted to say that I think the initiative to push that away by making it so cost prohibitive that it just won't happen anymore, it's actually going to be a loss for the district in people feeling a certain, you know, I look at the district as not just my employer of the last 27 years. I look at the district as the district that educated both of my children. And that's something that matters a lot. And I think that is partly responsible for why I come to all the board meetings and why I'm on so many committees because I'm grateful for that. And my children always knew that they had to do well, that they could be yanked at any time. They knew every year that if they were the one who caused a new class to form, that they might have to go to a different school, that we were always aware of being responsible. And so I just want to say, like I said, for me, another $500 for one more year doesn't matter. But I think it's really sad for the others who come after me. So I just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you. Adam?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, first I want to say again, thank you. You've heard this a lot, but it's, you have a lot of hard choices and no perfect answers. And I can see in the future, any gains you make towards normalization, getting people back into school could be easily reversed. So it's going to be a tough time. My quick question is, I was watching the facilities meeting this morning. I think Deb Bronfeld had a question about, she wasn't getting quick answers about what was happening with the referendum in terms of punch orders, what was being prioritized, what was getting fixed, when it's getting fixed. And to me, again, I'm learning about construction. It was somewhat of a red flag though. Again, is someone really, is there a master coordinator, like an owner's rep, who really is in touch with all, you know, the contractor epic, which is doing this construction again after 2006, to coordinate everything and keep people in the loop? I'll end with that.
Matt, do you want to answer that question? I think the gentleman deserves a response about who's watching the store, so to speak, on the referendum project.
Yeah, exactly. That's a good point, good way to say it.
Yes, Facilities Director Dave Harding, myself and our superintendent at this point, we are all on top of it on a daily and hourly basis.
Okay, so, okay, that's an answer. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Adam. Lise?
Hi, can you hear me?
You can.
Hi, so this is Alicia Brennan. I'm actually a pediatrician in the area. My girls go by a different last name, Liz. My daughter Sophie is going into her junior year. And I just wanted to give you my perspective as a pediatrician. I do appreciate all the time and effort you guys have given to this matter. I mean, it's been very well looked over. You guys have taken a lot of time and you've really waited to the last minute, which I think is very appropriate because you want to see what is going on in the community and what the trends are and things like that. So I do really appreciate how you've addressed this. I will say, working at the hospital, which is, I work primarily in the ER and on the inpatient floor, the transmission rates are at its lowest right now, which seems to be a good time to kind of, you know, dip our feet in the water, kind of see how things are going. And I can say that my daughter's been playing club soccer over the summer following appropriate protocols and it's been going very well. But what I would say is at an all-time high, and I'm right on the front line to see this, is depression, eating disorders, the number of the kids coming into the ER, the number of kids presenting to our eating disorder unit, et cetera, is through the roof. And I feel like sports, as Lori said, not just on the varsity level, on any level, is just getting kids out of the house, it's getting kids together with their peers, it's having them interact, it's putting some normalcy back in their lives. So I do, you know, obviously I'm a proponent of sports for the exercise, for the mental health benefit in and of themselves. But I think at a time like this, anything we can do to embrace normalcy while trying to stay safe is definitely what I would recommend for our kids. So I just want you guys to know that as a pediatrician, I'm comfortable, you know, putting my daughter in that situation. I'm hoping that everyone follows guidelines very closely. And I do understand that as we've had to do over the past couple of months, we may need to pivot at any moment in time. If that happens, they may happen with a lot of things, our decision to open school, et cetera. But again, I do think the more we can do to try to keep our kids' lives a little bit more normal will be refreshing and will be very helpful for their mental health. And again, for JV varsity freshmen, you know, whatever level we decide to do, I think for every child that's able to be included, it will definitely be a positive. So I just wanted to give you my perspective on that.
Thank you. Deborah Demaglio?
Oh, hi. I'm Deb Demaglio. I'm going along a lot with what Beverly said. Both of our children are on the autism program and I really appreciate, Dr. Glosso, that you guys are strongly considering bringing them back sooner than we all had expected. You know, even the scholarships, offering those to families, but yet not giving us special needs parents the ability or even the funds to be able to pay for childcare, kind of as a very single mom myself with only one income, only staying in Princeton just for this program. I mean, I have been so proud about what Princeton has done for my son from day one, six years ago. And I just want to say that, you know, as everyone talks about the mental health issue and the parents have been, I've known many parents, especially in circumstances like mine, that have really suffered watching their children regress, watching their children not get what they desperately need. And it wasn't, I wish my son could be neurotypical, believe me. I wish he can, could be, but he can't. And I just want to say that your efforts to bring them back, I've been really upset lately and I can speak for the other parents as well, we kind of felt like we weren't being heard. As much as we were writing everyone and expressing even ideas or options about how we could get our kids back in the school, even if it was just for physical therapy or occupational therapy, we felt like nobody was hearing us. And tonight, like Beverly said, I finally feel like someone's hearing us because this has been really, really hard on a lot of special needs families. And I can't speak to everyone else. I know that it's been hard on everybody for different reasons. But it's been especially difficult for kids that have a lot of supports that are needed in their classroom, one-to-one adaptive PE, speech, OT. And I've been, I have never been a bigger proponent of Princeton before this. And this is the only time I've been somewhat disappointed, but I'm glad and I appreciate that you guys are trying now. I really do appreciate it. I just want to say that. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Kip Charred?
Okay, I want to thank the superintendent very much and all of you for the funds that have been obtained for the internet access. I think those are really critical and I'm really very, very pleased that you have gotten the money. I don't know whether it's enough, so I may ask some questions about that later. But I just wanted to thank you on that. On the issue of athletics, I am not an expert. I did play athletics when I was at, in the Princeton system. And of course, you know, it seems as though COVID has moved by breathing and respiratory exchange. And of course, there's a lot of that in athletics. So I am very concerned about that issue, but again, I'm not an expert. But I do want to just mention, and this is going to be a question and you don't have to answer it now. In fact, I'm sure you won't know the answer. But in the governor's proposed budget, there's a cut of over $12 million for funds for schools in mental health. And I would expect it would affect all schools, but I don't know the particulars about that. But I understand there will be mental health professionals laid off if it goes through. And I think that there is some opposition out there that is trying to be heard. I don't know yet whether you guys have expressed anything, but I just wanted to bring that up, that that's another factor to be considered. So thank you very much.
Beth, could I respond to Kip? Kip, thank you for your comments. I will tell you that I signed a letter yesterday along with the other Mercer County superintendents. And it is a statewide initiative of all superintendents to restore those funds for mental health. So there is quite a bit of lobbying effort that's going on behind the scenes. And I'm sure other organizations like school boards and NJEA are in support of the mental health professionals. So I just wanted to mention that is going on. So there are a lot of people advocating for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kip. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Any other questions out there? Julia Dippel?
Yes, hi. I called in before. I just wanted to comment regarding the fall sports. I agree with Alicia Brennan. And I don't know if all of you know that all summer long, every Tuesday and Thursday at noon, the varsity boys soccer team has been practicing. They have what's called captains' practices, where the coaches don't go, it's just the kids. So as far as I'm aware, there's a whole lot of boys varsity soccer players practicing and not a single one has gotten sick the entire summer. So they're already practicing. So there's your, I think that's your test right there. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions out there? I'm not seeing any, Beth.
Okay, then I think we are going back to our, into our superintendent's kind of agenda. I'll just note that the restart and reopening plan was a consent item, so I don't know that we need to talk about that anymore. We can cover that later. And then the question would be, I think we need a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent to be, to do the phased-up athletics program. If we have a motion... If we have a motion, a second, then we can discuss that. So motion, Brian. Second, Jess. So now we can discuss it again before we vote. Is there anyone who would like to speak about it at this point again?
What specifically? Are we, we're voting that varsity comes in in two weeks, one week? I wasn't even sure the timing we started.
Varsity, varsity would come in on September 14th. And the tryouts would begin. Varsity sports would be authorized by the Board of Education. The other activities would not begin or be approved by the Board of Education until students return to school. When students return to school in live instruction, then we may expand and phase up the JV and freshmen and all other activities, remote activities and/or in-person activities that are pre-planned and approved by the building administrator.
So we would vote again on the other stuff, on the JV and the, right? We're not voting, we're not voting on that. That's not attached to the varsity right now.
My understanding was this is a full phase up plan.
Yeah, I would think you're voting on everything, Deb, because this is a, this is a phase in plan. This is what we're planning to do. On October 1st, if we're able to bring our youngsters back, then we will, I will direct Brian to go ahead and expand. We'll direct all of our co-curricular activity directors to go ahead and open up all of our programs, because we're bringing kids back.
And again, just to clarify, we're not actually making any decision on the middle school now. That's not before us. We're not canceling programs at the middle school. We're just not.
We're not authorizing anything at the middle school at the moment.
Okay, I would encourage us to think outside the box there. I think we have students who need in-person activities as much, as much as our high schoolers do. And I think that it doesn't have to be athletics. It could be other activities as well. But I'd encourage us, if we think it's safe enough, and if we support this for the high school, I do think we need to really think hard how, how we can make something happen for our middle schoolers.
Michelle?
Um, you know, I'm a sports parent. My, my daughter was a two-sport athlete, three concussion athlete at Princeton High School. And so I absolutely understand the the importance of sports and how it can, it can change a student's experience and make high school very, very fun. I also understand that, at least for my kid, the fun was also having this friend group and getting together before the games and getting together after the games. And that was part of the whole sports experience. And so I'm going to make the difficult decision to vote against this, because our job is to ensure that our students are educated. And that's every student, and especially our vulnerable students. And I really, one, feel that that's what we ought to be focusing on. Secondly, I'm not confident that we will be able to adequately keep our kids safe. And I, and I understand and respect the decision of parents who are good with, you know, having their kids play in sports. But we are including football. If we could keep, if the major colleges in the country could keep football safe, don't you think they'd be playing right now? If the job of a cheerleader is to do stunts and to cheer for her team, how can she accomplish that, wearing a mask and not being able to do stunts? So I'm not sure that what we're offering our kids is a full sports experience. It is, we have half the kids signing up. We may not, for some teams, even have enough kids to field a team and to be competitive. But my major concern is about the risk. And we just had a conversation, and my computer is getting ready to die, so I'm going to wrap this up. We just had a conversation about risk and, and how we ought to follow rules and do as much as we can to protect our kids. And I just don't feel like voting for this and supporting this, opening sports is the way to accomplish that. So I'm going to be voting no.
Deanna?
So I'll just follow Michelle, because I also have, I only have a one concussion athlete. But first, I just wanted to say, you know, we're in a pandemic. Doctors do not understand what COVID does. And you know, we can just look back in the spring, they were intubating all the patients on ventilators. And then they found out that that was actually causing more harm than good, and now they just flip the patients over. So we're all learning on the go here, and I just wanted to bring attention to an article that was sent to us by the administration where the chief doctor at Ohio State has been working on a three-month study. And it was presented to PAC 12 and BIG 10 leaders before they shut football down. And basically, anywhere from 15% to 20% of kids who were either, who had the virus, most of them had mild syndromes, mild symptoms, there was a 15 to 30% chance of myocarditis, which is heart inflammation that can lead to cardiac arrest with exertion. So I just wanted to point that out. So I'm concerned that allowing sports in this limited way will potentially, potentially jeopardize the reopening of schools. It's also a matter of equity. We should, if we're going to allow sports, we need to allow drama to proceed and the studio band and other, and give kids the opportunity who don't play sports. Philosophically, I'm troubled that our sports will begin when our students are not in the classroom. I understood, I understand student athletes have suffered, but so have all our other kids. This is a risk I don't think we should take, and so I will be voting no.
Brian?
Thanks. So I make sure, yeah, okay. So I strongly endorse the plan. I think it's very, a very well-considered one. I think that Dr. Galasso is really trying very, very hard to make as many things work for 3,900 students as possible. And he was very clear about what his priority is, getting those pre-K to one kids back in, getting our special education program up and running. And I admire that and support that and understand why he's going to have athletics on a short leash, if you will, and be closely monitoring that and insisting that Brian and his team and all the coaches are extremely vigilant. And I hope it's successful. And obviously, if it's not, you know, we have the opportunity to walk, walk this back. Dr. Galasso will, you know, change his decision. But it is the start of our ability to get our students engaged in the learning that we celebrate outside of the classroom. That is so important. And I was very happy to hear Dr. Galasso talk about how eager he is to get all of the clubs and all of the activities going at all levels as soon as we can do that safely. And as soon as we can get our schools open, with the schools opening being the highest priority. Sports are happening. Sports are happening on our fields, on our track. And I think the ability to have our wonderful coaches working with our, our children and young adults who they know, who they see in the hallways, and to help them grow and develop with some limited interscholastic competition is a wonderful thing for us to do. And while you know, the pandemic is challenging, very challenging for adults and children of all ages, there have been numerous studies that have said that the damage to student athletes is measurable. And it's significant. It ranges from loss of academic, decline in academic performance, reduced self-esteem, anxiety, depression, eating disorders, and self-harm. And so the extent that we can limit some of that, I think we're, we're doing what we should be doing for, you know, one group of kids without jeopardizing all of the other kids. The elementary schools are completely separate. And again, we're going to be very careful. If there's any spread, we're going to stop it. So I think this is an important decision. I think it's a very well-considered decision. I think it's coming at a time when our medical professionals, when the governor, the state, the county, the local medical professionals, a couple of medical professionals on this call have said that the risk is very, very low. So I strongly endorse our doing it, and I'm grateful for Dr. Galasso's proposal.
Thank you, Brian. Anyone else want, Peter?
Thank you, Beth. I'd like to second a lot of what Brian just said. I think that that was well said. I don't need to repeat it. I'd like to just bring up a couple other points. As of today, we are at the lowest point in the pandemic since it started. That does not mean it can't go back up. Of course, it can. But I would pose this question to anyone who is making any decision about a COVID-related issue. And that is, what is the, if we do not go back to some normalcy in a stepped-up approach now, when do we do it? What is the metric by which we decide we go back to that normalcy? At some point, I imagine, we all envision that this is not going to be the new normal, right? We're not going to have remote school forever. Eventually, we will go back. And my question is, when do we do it? We could wait till there are zero cases of COVID in Princeton, in New Jersey, in the country, in the world. But I don't think anybody, maybe they do, but I don't think that we need to wait till there are zero cases to do that. I think having a measured approach and a measured start makes sense. That seems to be what we've done in New Jersey from the very beginning. And we in New Jersey have been among the most successful states in our country in making sure we stay safe. And I think this is just another example of that. So I believe that the approach that Dr. Galasso has proposed makes the most sense to me. Are there, you know, possible risks? Of course there are. Life is risk. And we, I don't think we make decisions in other circumstances when there's zero risk. There's always a risk. But I also believe, based upon, you know, some of the discussion we've had tonight, that there's a great risk, and I think even a greater risk to our students by not reopening as soon as we can in every capacity that we can. Of course, I want everything to reopen, but we have to look at each thing that students do separately. And I don't think you can compare an indoor activity with an outdoor activity. If we could teach kids outdoors, I think we should go back to school tomorrow. We just don't have the capacity to do that. If we can do it for sports, I think we should. And if we do it in a measured way, a safe way, one that abides by all the protocols that have been set forth by the, by every health organization, every governmental organization that exists, I think it makes sense to do it. And so that's why I will support Dr. Galasso's proposal.
Thank you, Peter. Jess?
I also, I third what Brian said and second what Peter said, and so much of it's already been said, so I'll just reiterate that. I think that we all come here tonight with, I know I have a terrible pit in my stomach. Because, because I know that every, whatever decision we're, we're getting behind tonight, it's about caring about what's in the best interest of our kids and our community. And so I do think that we are, we have and continue to very carefully weigh risks and to think carefully about the benefits of, of what our kids need in terms of normalcy and activity and the things that they love and the opportunities that that their activities present. And so I think that this, if we support the recommendation before us tonight, I think it's a step in the direction of, of all of those activities that comprise an education in Princeton, and that's why I support the motion.
Thank you, Jess. Anyone else want to say anything? Dan?
I'll just state briefly, because everybody has articulated things so well, but I do support the plan. I think that New Jersey went into this crisis earlier than most other states and managed it properly. And the incidence of COVID-19 in Mercer County and New Jersey in general are very low. This is a good time to move forward with the plan. I think we have to have realistic expectations. COVID-19 is about taking two steps, two steps forward and one step back. And I hope in terms of equity, this can set a precedent for the middle school and all the clubs and intramural sports and other activities that our students so desperately need. And you can see that they need it for physical reasons, the eating disorders, the mental health, the need for socialization. It's not just about sports. It's much more than that. And so I think that on balance, it's a good plan, and we should move forward. And I have confidence that the administration can manage any setbacks appropriately.
Thank you, Dan. Susan?
Well, fifth, I guess, the discussion, but I'll go, since Dan was the last one to speak, I'll say that I support everything he just said. I have gotten some reassurance from both Barry and Brian Tabinsky that the plan, the plan will be well-monitored and that should setbacks occur, the appropriate steps will be taken. I hope the parents, the athletes understand the commitment and can get the benefits from the sport while understanding they have a commitment to the community to follow the rules that will be set out for them.
Thank you, Susan. There's no further comment. I think we can call the question. Matt?
Now you're on mute.
Voice in one meeting. Beth Baron?
Yes.
Deb Bronfield? Dan Dart?
Yes.
Beth Storch?
Yes.
Betsy Bagwell?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder?
No.
Peter Katz?
Yes.
Daphne Kendall?
No.
Susan Kanter?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And I want to thank my colleagues for the very thoughtful and careful and discussion. And I think we all have done our best to kind of figure this out. It's been a very, great, I don't know, for many of us, a very big thing to weigh. And I appreciate that we can have these conversations and try to figure these things out together. And to all the work that Dr. Galasso and his team has put into this, coming to a place where we can find some consensus as a board. So thank you for that. I think that takes us to a part of the meeting that we're going to move fairly quickly through, perhaps. We're now in H personnel. And what I'll do is read the, just give a general indication of the item and then mostly consents. So we'll just move. If you have a question, please just stop me. Okay? So H1 is appointments. H2, transfer and reassignments. H3, personnel items. H4 is retirement. H5, leaves of absence. H6, resignations. H7, student services. H8, curriculum and instruction. H9, six-period compensation. H10, motion to approve anti-bullying coordinator. H11, revised central administrators' contracts. We go to I. I1 is purchase of materials Pearson. J1 is student services, educational placement, special needs. And I just want to thank the administration there for giving us a bit more explanation that we've had in the past. It was very helpful. K1, joint transportation with Lawrence. K2, emergent purchase above bid threshold. K3, travel and related expenses. And that brings us to L1, the consent approval. Can I have a motion, please? Peter, second. Brian? Mr. Bolden, call the roll, please.
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfield?
Yes.
Dan Dart?
Yes.
Beth Storch?
Yes.
Betsy Bagwell?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder?
Yes.
Peter Katz?
Yes.
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Susan Kanter?
Yes.
Adjourned to pass.
Thank you. And that brings us to M1, another, our final public comment on any topic. So again, if you have something you want to say, you can raise your hand. We ask you, keep it to three minutes. State your name and address, please.
Are there any questions? I am not seeing any, Beth.
If there's none, that brings us to the closing discussion comments. We have no further comments. I think we could have a motion to adjourn. Brian?
Can I make one comment?
Yes.
I, and I'm sure everybody feels the same way. One thing that's been clear, serving on this board,
One thing that's been clear serving on this board for the past two months is how extraordinarily hard Dr. Galasso, members of his administrative team has been, have been working, the teachers, the aides, the people who've been part of different working groups. And many people thank us for our hard volunteer service. I, I just wanted to thank Dr. Galasso and the whole team for their enormous efforts, working seven days a week and, you know, 16 and 18-hour days and, and all with, at, at the heart of it is, is doing the right thing for our children. And so I'm just very grateful.
Thank you, Brian. Yeah, we didn't do a gratitude today, so that's our gratitude at the end. I like that. Thank you, all you guys. And I will note, we do have another meeting, and correct me if I'm wrong, next, next.
Michelle?
Just about to done, just about done. If you want to get everyone in the car, should be ready, like, literally two minutes.
Oh, Peter, Peter's not muted.
Sorry about that. Sorry, guys.
We're falling apart here. Does someone else want to speak?
I do.
Michelle?
And, and I don't want too much time to go by and I'll keep it quick, but Daphne Kendall has done an amazing job as a chair of our negotiations committee. She's done it with energy. She's done it with grace. She's just made it an experience that has been a positive one under rather challenging circumstances. And I don't want any time to go by without saying, thank you, Madam Chair. You did a great job.
I second that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. It was, it was the team. So, thank you, everybody.
And Betsy, did you want to say something?
I just said, I have one comment, question, perhaps Dr. Ginsberg or Dr. Galasso. I realize it's our last board meeting before the first day of school. And if there are any parents out there who are not sure how their child logs in for the first day of school or where they go, it's not the typical drop-off that we typically have. So I just would love to know, are we, are we doing anything this week to make sure, are we doing any dry runs with kids to make sure everyone's there for the first day of school? And if parents have questions, who should they contact?
The best, go ahead, Bob.
You can do it.
No, go ahead. It's fine.
So, Dr. Galasso spoke earlier about a cheat sheet, and that's actually what he was referring to, was some directions we've put together for parents in both English and Spanish that when they pick up their devices, they will have that sheet that will go with them, which will explain to them how they can log in and give them the, the background that they need to proceed forward. And have to thank Chris Gallion for putting that together for us. And it, it should be, they, they will, tomorrow is when we're starting to give out the devices and those sheets will go with each device. So.
And are all devices, not all devices are being picked up this week, though.
The, well, in the elementary schools, the elementary schools, yes, that's tomorrow afternoon and Thursday. The middle school and the high school, I know, have some other plans.
Great. Great. So for, for parents at the upper levels, they should contact the school principals?
The kids at the upper levels, because the, the new devices haven't arrived, our plan is that they should use the devices they had last year. I know Dr. Galasso and Mr. Bolden and Valerie Ulrich have arranged that we're going to be upgrading the hotspots that some of those kids had. So it has, you know, more juice to it so that they can interact more effectively until we get the new devices in.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, Betsy. All right, then may I have a motion to adjourn? A Jess, a second by Betsy, all in favor? Okay, thank you. Meeting adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Everyone, good night.
Good night, all.